Good morning, everybody. It's 9:00 AM on Wednesday, September 24th, 2014. It's time for the Tulare County Planning Commission meeting. Rule call, please.
Gom.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Pilianno.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, foundation, and individual liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is the public comment portion of the meeting. It says, "At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited to the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use the microphone to state your name and address for the record." If there are anybody that would like to address the Planning Commission today on any item that is not on our agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is a presentation honoring RMA Director Jake Raper Jr.
You just got here. Mr. Chairman, good morning. Mike Spata, RMA. If I may, just take a brief moment to suggest a protocol with respect to this honorable event today honoring our Director Jake Raper upon his retirement. There is a plaque in your presence that is from the Planning Commission in recognizing the outstanding work of the Director. Then I have a presentation from the staff. What I would suggest is that you come down to the podium here, read the plaque, present it to Mr. Raper, then let me read the presentation from the staff. And then if either you or any of your colleagues have any farewell comments, that would be great. And then I know the staff has some farewell comments. And then if anyone from the public would like to make any comments, that would be fine, too. So with that, if you'd like to come down, let's go.
We can go around like this. Unless you want a case in commission.
Well...
It's up to you, young man. Here's your chair.
We'll just do it right here. Step right up here. Is there a photo op?
Yeah, there should be.
Eric has the...
Looks a lot like me, the Catholic confession, but anyway.
Jake, this is a plaque from the Planning Commission. As you can see, it's pretty nice. It's a image of the county of Tulare. And it's well done here. Says Jake Raper Jr. Says, "For outstanding service to the Tulare County Planning Commission, Tulare County Resource Management Agency, and the California planning profession, your innovative contributions to the planning process will be valued, applauded, and appreciated for all times."
Oh, cool. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Turn that around.
How's this?
Oh, kissing.
Can you see it? Hey, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Spata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jake. This is a presentation on behalf of the staff, Jake, from the Resource Management Agency. This is to Jake Raper Jr., AICP Director, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Dear Jake, on behalf of the Tulare County Resource Management Agency, this is to congratulate you on your retirement from Tulare County and for over forty years of outstanding service to the planning profession. For your dedication, you have blazed a trail in fostering innovative planning policies and procedures in Tulare County. In particular, your focus on streamlining and simplifying the planning, development, and building process contributed greatly to the rapid increase in the volume of approved permits. In addition, your consistent drive to improve technology, embracing all aspects of the planning, development, and building process, will prepare Tulare County well for the enormous challenges of the 21st century. Equally important, your concern for the professional growth of others is acknowledged in that you always provided a listening ear and a coaching voice to young professionals who sought your valuable advice. In conclusion, as you embark on the next phase of your distinguished career, please know that we appreciate and applaud what you have done for the residents of Tulare County. You truly deserve the accolade of being described as a "planner's planner." All the best to you, your wife, and your family on this auspicious occasion of your retirement. Sincerely, Michael C. Spata.
He's liking these pictures.
Well, you know, this is the last photo op. Okay, go ahead. Okay, thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to say anything, and then the staff and the public, that would be great. Thank you.
Well, yes, I would. And I'll start a little bit, and then I'll, when I'm through here, then I'll turn it to the rest of the commission here. If they have something to say, that'd be fine. But Jake, I want to, I do want to say, I'm junior, or I'm senior here to only Mr. Whitlatch. And we were here for quite a few years prior to your coming to Tulare County. And I'll be first to say that the county wasn't working at top efficiency. And the day you came here was a breath of fresh air. You've really, as Mike said, streamlined things, made things easier for us here in the commission. And I know there, and there's, and you've got many strengths, but probably the one that impresses me the most is your ability to recognize and attract and to hire competent people, surrounding yourself with the ability to get this work job. And then on top of that, then you've got enough common sense to step back and let them do their job instead of having to micromanage everything on the thing. So that's incredible. And as important as it is to get capable and competent people, you're able to get people that play well together, which at this level, when you've got these levels of expertise and training and experience and whatnot, there's egos involved. And in this case, this group that you've assembled here is just way beyond anything we've ever had experienced here in this county. And we're certainly going to miss you, for sure. But your legacy is that you've got building blocks of these strong shoulders out here that'll be able to carry this county forward in the planning process for many years to come. And we thank you, and come back anytime you want.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy, you want to say something?
Oh, you stole what I wanted to say.
I was just going to say all of my notes as I checked them off.
That's why I went there.
So I just want to say to you that it was a joy working with you. It was a joy getting to know you and your wife. And please come back and see us and thank you for all you've done for this county because it is very enjoyable to sit on this planning commission because of the...
Thank you.
And Jake, I guess Ed said everything I needed to say, I wanted to say. You do leave behind an awesome team. I think it's one of the, well, you know, compared to a lot of counties, I think they're a terrific group of people that work well together. But what I, I guess I want to, you know, wish you a good retirement. But I don't want to, I want to take a note from the Planning Commission. I don't want to repeat testimony that is already on...
I always was impressed, Jake, with the humble way that you approached your job and your tremendous leadership skills. The thing that rings the truest with me is the, in that proclamation, was the interest in professional growth of others. And that's something that you really took an interest in with me personally and the California County Planning Commissioners Association. 2008 and 2009, we went through some terrible times in that statewide organization. But Jake was there all the time, you know, supporting us and, you know, helping us. And our county really helped carry that organization through some terrible times. And we, you know, he supported me on the board, and he also supported all of us to attend those conferences. And because of that, we're all better planning commissioners and better people, just for knowing you. I thank you, Jake.
Very kind.
Jake, I noticed you came in about a minute late this morning, but we're going to have a special waiver proclamation for you with the grand jury, so...
I appreciate that.
You don't receive any negative feedback from anyone on this. I share everyone's comments. I came out of Silicon Valley many years ago, and I saw a lot of executives. And they were successful, not because they were great, they're pretty visionary, and I think you're pretty visionary, but the staff that they surrounded themselves with is what made them successful. And I think, as one of my CEOs used to say, "We need to put all the wood behind one arrow." And I certainly think you did that from the time you arrived to the time you departed.
Thank you.
My turn.
Hey, Billy.
Thank you. I was appointed, I think, in 1998, and that was a long time ago. And when I came, we had projects that went back twenty years. Some of the projects went back so far that the original people had died, or they'd sold their property, and we don't have any of that anymore. And that's wonderful, because we can get along with the things that make money for the county. And I thank you for that effort. I think you're the third director I've gone through since I've been on this board. But also, have any of you seen the State Farm ads on TV? They're actually very clever. You know, there's the one where the woman gets up in the middle of the night, comes downstairs, it appears that her husband is talking to another woman. She says, "Who are you talking to?" She says, "Well, I'm talking to Jake at State Farm." And she grabs the phone, and he said, "Okay, Jake at State Farm. What are you wearing?" He says, "Well, khaki pants." So I guarantee you, Jake, when you walk out the door and you retire, no one will remember you.
Except for Jake at State Farm.
But they'll say, "Oh, Jake, I know Jake at State Farm." Thank you. You're always welcome at my house, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I was the last one on this planning commission, it's suitable that I'm the last one to speak.
That works.
Jake, I thank you for your support. I remember when I, when you called me and said you were going to make a new position for me, because I was special.
You are special.
Then the reports started coming out from the grand jury that I should not be here.
Right.
And you came up to me and said, "Don't listen to the papers. We want you here." So I thank you for that. And I was ready to say, "I don't need any part of this." And I'm glad you stood up for me and encouraged me to continue. And I'm sure that's what you do with all your employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any staff would like to talk?
Yeah, we have a few comments here. You know, I'd like to share my reflection on Jake's tenure as RMA Director. You know, a number of words come to mind. Experience, he certainly has it with, over thirty years with municipalities as well as counties. His leadership, he's proven his leadership with his hands-on role in working with your planning commission, the board, the CAO, community stakeholders. He's got a get-or-done philosophy. You know, that's more of a phrase than a word, but he's got this get-or-done philosophy to getting projects completed. I think that you mentioned that about, that we don't have that backlog that we used to have. We get things moved. However, the two words that most come to mind that I associate with Jake is streamline and simplify. And he has this strong sense of importance to be able to provide good customer service to the people that this agency serves, the public. He's been able to make some changes to the way we process our projects. We've condensed timelines. We process things concurrently rather than after each other, so we've compressed the timeline in getting projects out. There's a dedication to that, as well as professional development. That's where I really like to thank Jake personally. When I came in as a planner, I did the housing element. We decided, because of the crunch, the budget crunch, we did it in-house, without consultants at all. So it was just like dropped on my lap, but it was like sink or swim. But he helped me, and he encouraged me and said, "You can do it." And he gives that approach, though. What I really, really am thankful for Jake is what I've learned from him and the environment that he's established within the RMA for advancement opportunities.
Thank you.
Jake, as a fellow Cal Poly Slow alum, it's inspiring to watch you actually get to the end of your career as a planner in what must have been a career that was filled oftentimes with wondering why you'd do it. It is inspiring to me, and I take some pages from your career. First of all, it's your vision. I think that really drove us to where we are today. It's often storied in planning academics to inspire a business model upon a planning branch. I think you've done that with the team that's been assembled here. As said in the law, the thing speaks for itself. I take with me your sense of equity. When you first interviewed me, you talked about the communities of Tulare County and the needs and the issues within Tulare County, and that's why I'm here before you today. And I thank you for that. And then finally, it's, you are a planner's planner. You're very well-known in the industry. When we went to Cal Poly last year for the Climate Action Plan seminars, it was interesting to note how well-known you were in the industry. I used to teach at Cal Poly, and I think they knew you better than they know me. And I think you'll be remembered there much longer than I am. So it's only with gratitude for what you have done for this industry and for this branch that I thank you today.
We're going to have to get a different arrangement.
Need a longer table.
Jake, from the very first time that I spoke with you over the phone, it's just been a pleasure to work with you. And if there's, and I'll make this short, but if there's any doubt, Jake made a statement yesterday that he likes delegation. You know, just give me a call, I'll verify that. So it's, but I want to just thank you for the opportunity to work with you, and it's been just truly a pleasure since day one.
My turn. Boy, I almost have nothing to say. Ditto. Thank you for hiring me. You know, I was unemployed at the time, but you knew me from the past when I worked with the city of Dinuba. And like everyone says, I, one of the biggest things that you've done is been able to assemble that team. And, you know, we worked for you, too. We worked for this commission and the rest of the county, and you've, you harness that. You know, you believe in that collaborative effort, not just within the county, within our department, but also with other agencies, Air District, Caltrans, everyone like that. And that's an important thing. A lot of people lose sight of the fact that we just don't do things internally. We have to reach out for other agencies, and you want us to do that, which you do. The thing I really enjoy about working with Jake, too, is that his willingness to listen to us. You know, he doesn't want you to be a parrot. He doesn't want his opinion to be the only opinion that counts. He encourages debate. And he wants to find the best solution, and he wants your opposing or differing views. And that's a strength of a leader. And I had a conversation with a colleague of mine yesterday, ended retirement, and he essentially said, and this is kind of paraphrased, you know, "A good leader develops new leaders." And that's what Jake has done. So you put together, I think, an outstanding team that is able to convey to the county and serve the county and serve this commission to get our job done. And our job is to keep it going forward. The other thing I like about Jake, too, is like, you know, we're all going through the, what we call the flashing twelves. You know, and a flashing twelve is one of those persons, when the VCR goes out, it's just flashing twelve. We leave it alone. The kids want to fix it, you know? Jake wants to fix it. I didn't. My kid will want to fix it. But technology, he has embraced it. We're working on a new system, our Palms system, to permit, and land management system that Jake advocated strongly. Other stuff, you know, all of our, all of our, just our ability to use the latest technology, Jake embraces that, and I like that. It's even ahead of me. So thank you, Jake, for all that you've done. I will reflect on you, and I will say, you know, I'm your titan in planning. And as we go back through the years, and we've been in this area, you know, we're going to say, "Stuff of legend," and that's what you are in my mind, so thank you so much.
Do you want to say something, Clay?
I guess I have to. I'm not a member of RMA. Jake didn't hire me. But we, I do consider, and I think our, most of the people who've worked with Jake consider, it was a team effort in anything that got done. And that was one of the things that always impressed me. And the other, and there's two other things. One's a personal note, but the first is that our office is blamed for everything that goes wrong. It stopped, started stopping it when Jake started. It was, it's always, it's county council's fault. It's county council's fault. We don't set policies, we don't do anything. We don't even make decisions. But it was always our fault until Jake came. And that was refreshing to know that that's stopped. And I know in the future that's stopped, because I have great confidence in the future leader of RMA. The second thing, and I'm saying this in public, because Jake and I used to have lunch to, not lunch, breakfast together every Friday or so. And I remember picking up the last tab. And I think it's his turn.
Go ahead, maybe at Starbucks at eight-thirty in the morning, and then finally I'll pick up the...
But it's great working with you. Really, I truly mean that. It was great working with you.
Thanks, Ethan. Okay, well, the commission has said their piece, and staff... Well, it's my turn. Unless somebody else wants to say something. Not yet. It's not your turn yet. Oh, okay. Sorry. I'd like to open this up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to come up and make comment regarding Jake? Make a positive comment, that is.
Come up and make your comment.
For or against?
Yes, come forward. Please give us your name, and just your name, I guess. We don't need an address on this one, but so we know.
My name is Herman Cassidy, and the reason I'm here today is I have a parcel map project that's on the agenda. And it's only incidental that I happened to be here when this honor was being given to Jake. And frankly, I've never met Jake before, never, I don't think I've even seen him. But over the years, starting with the nineteen, mid-1970s, I've had miscellaneous small projects here in the county. And in those years, trying to get just a simple parcel map through the county was agonizing, to say the least. And it's been only in the last year that I had a need to come back. Before, was reintroduced to the players here at the county level in the RMA. And I've said this at public, previous public meetings in review of different aspects of that parcel map, that I'm just overwhelmed and so impressed with the change and the client familiarity of the agency, that it's just a night and day, a hundred percent. I never knew what the cause of that was, but now I know what it is, and I think it all belongs to this young man right here. And I want to thank him personally, just as a resident from the county of Tulare, for the effort and the improvement, big improvement, that's occurred here in this, in the agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Anyone else like to say anything? Okay. Mr. Raper, it's your turn now.
Well, I, Jake Raper, Director as, until October 3rd of RMA. I just wanted to say thank you very much for this honor. It's above and beyond what I expected, but I truly do appreciate it. When I came on board, it, you know, Dana and April and Chuck are some of the remnant staff that have been there, and they had to put up with my constant battering and saying, "Let's get things done. Why are you doing it this way?" And keep asking the questions. But they're very, very capable staff. The, truly, the success of the agency is not with me. It's with the people that really do the job and the, their ability to embrace the change and, change in philosophy. You know, I took it to a certain point. I, when I first came on board, we had about six hundred employees in RMA. Soon as I came on board, we had three hundred. Later on, we had two hundred through various reorganizations. But I think from an RMA standpoint and an agency standpoint, it helps the agency to focus on what the real mission is, and that's the, really, the development and service to the community. It's also associated with the roads, circulation, land development, building permits, code enforcement. All those are service-oriented kinds of activities. And I think with the downsizing and focusing of RMA, it's going to become much more effective agency to serve the residents of Tulare County. The, you know, I can't say enough about really all the employees of Tulare County. Ninety-nine percent of them are really dedicated employees. They really want to do a good job. They just need the opportunity to do so. And I really thank you for your acknowledging my leadership philosophy, and I do delegate, delegate a lot. And the way, and the reason I delegate is really to give that learning experience to the staff, give them the responsibility for that, knowing that if they really do screw up, I get the blame and I get the phone call. But it's paid off tremendously over the years. I've mentored a lot of young planners. They're all planning directors now, city managers, and I see these guys going up into the ranks as well. So the other part of my parting statements to this commission and to the public is that the new leadership of RMA is, is taking, is being taken to the next step. My strength is try to communicate with people, having fun, and I like parties to recognize employees for their job well done. Mr. Spata has an organizational approach, the team-based approach, which I tried to initiate to some, some successful degree, but he's taken that one step farther and has just, just gone off the charts. And he has been able to pull all of RMA's staffing together to work as a unit, whereas I didn't really have that kind of success, but he's achieving that success. Also, he's very budget-minded, which I was not. And so he's making sure that RMA is really doing as much cost recovery as possible. But at the same time, as part of that, streamlining and simplifying is people are getting their money's worth when they come into the county for service. And so with those strengths, the RMA will go, go much further. His knowledge and his relationship with county council is one that has, was, needed a bridge between RMA and county council, and he knows county council, county council knows him. They have a, they talk the same language as well. So that bridge has been built, and it's going to be much stronger as it goes on. So, you know, I can't say enough positive things about Mike. He's, he's very strong. He's more opinionated than I am, but I think that's because of his attorney training. I don't know. So, but anyway, thank you very much for this kind, kind honor. I do appreciate it. So, but I'm not really done in planning yet. Hopefully, I'll do some, keep my fingers into the planning profession and doing something. So thank you very much for your kind words this morning.
Thank you.
Last time I got a standing ovation, I had to run out of the room because they were chasing me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say one brief thing? I was going to save it for the end of the meeting. I know we're running a little bit late. But I had a chance to, not on purpose, because I have an interest in attending the city council meeting on their new general plan. And I was a part of our general plan, not the hard work, but since the beginning and even in choosing the consultant. And, you know, they have a, they have a good plan. But after I listened to their plan and I thought back on the plan that we have under your watch, our plan is clear, it's concise. People may not like it, but it's a good plan. And it's, you know, the cities, their plans are nothing compared to what you went through to chart the... to chart the future of Tulare County, and that's what the general plan is really about. And so, thank you, thank you and all the staff for giving us such a wonderful general plan and all the other things you do for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Mr. Spata, is there anything else under this agenda item here?
Are you retiring?
Yes. This is my swan song to the planning commission, so I wish you all the best, it's been wonderful. And continue to do the outstanding job that you do for Tulare County and for the public. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all right. We're moving on now to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. This would be the minutes for August twenty-seven.
I'll make approval of the minutes unless we have some changes.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pilianno.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay. Item five is the parcel map public hearing. Actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing, unless anyone wishes to discuss any of these items requested, that'll be pulled for separate public hearings. No staff presentation will be given on any items unless requested. So we've got items, item five A is tentative parcel map, number PPM fourteen dash zero zero six, James Jackson. Five B is a tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero four zero, Stan Clevenger with Neil Zerling as land surveyor. We've got five C is a tentative parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero one eight, Mike Bennett with James Witten and Associates as agent. And D, which is the tentative parcel map, number PPM fourteen dash zero three eight, Herman and Virginia Cassidy with Forrester and Weber as agent. Is there anyone on commission here that would like to pull any one of these for further discussion? Seeing none? Is there anybody that has, must recuse themselves from any of these items I'm missing? Okay. Seeing none, and I'll open up the public testimony portion. Is anybody in the public that would like to make comment to the planning commission on any of these items? If so, please give us your name and address and which item you would like to address. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission here for a motion to approve the, to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the environmental impact quality or SEQA, and to conditionally approve tentative parcel map. And let's start with parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero zero six.
I'll make that motion.
Second, roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pilianno.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, how about five B, parcel map thirteen dash zero four zero?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can we from now on, after the vote has been made, say the outcome of the vote?
Oh, all right.
Vote has been approved.
Always been a thing, all right, I will endeavor to do that, counsel.
I'll remind you.
Yes, you will. Okay, do we have a motion on five B, the tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero four zero?
I'll make that motion. I second it.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pilianno.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
That motion has passed. And D is tentative parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero three eight.
Make that motion, we pass tentative parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero three eight, approve the category exemption.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pilianno.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Let's move on then to item six. Six A is, six is a public hearing, six A is a special use permit, number PSP fourteen dash zero three nine, Fur Inc. with Heather Mulholland, twenty-twelve Irrevocable Trust, and Elisa Cooley as a twenty-twelve Irrevocable Trust. This is a categorical exemption and a special use permit to allow the installation of one thirty thousand gallon propane tank for above-ground storage, flammable units or liquids exceeding the aggregate ten thousand gallon maximum allowed being stored in above-ground on a two-hundred-and-thirteen-point-five acre site in an AE twenty exclusive ag zone. The site's located at four-six-eight-zero-zero, road one-twenty-eight, between Avenue four-sixty-four and four-seventy-two, northeast of Orange Cove, and our contact is Dana. And you have the floor, Dana, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Chairman Diaz, commissioners. As mentioned, this is a thirty thousand gallon propane tank request, and this project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to section one-five-three-zero-three, class three pertaining to new construction. And this project is compatible with this exemption because a propane tank is considered an accessory structure to the existing citrus orchards, and the project will not have any permanent impact on the number of vehicle trips or employees at the project site. Entitlement is found in section sixteen, part two B of ordinance three fifty-two, which allows flammable liquids stored above ground for agricultural purposes in a quantity greater than ten thousand gallons only if a special use permit is first approved. In addition, the project has met the development standards for above-ground storage of flammable liquids as detailed in section fifteen A five E of the ordinance code. The project is located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, land use element of the Tulare County General Plan, and the land use designation is Valley Agriculture. The project was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County General Plan policies. The project is located west of road one-twenty-eight, between avenues four-sixty-four and four-seventy-two, As previously mentioned, the project is located in the AE twenty zone and contains citrus orchards, the surrounding properties are all zoned AE twenty, and contain orchards This is an aerial view of the project site, and the location of the tanks will be in the center of this parcel, in this area, although I don't think you can see my arrow. This property is under Williamson Act, and a Williamson Act consistency analysis was performed for the project, and it was found to be compatible with the act. This is the site plan, and the tank will have an emergency shut-off valve, vehicle impact protection, appropriate signage, fire extinguisher, and it will be fenced with a six-foot high chain link. And as mentioned, the tank will be located centrally, approximately twelve hundred feet from all, in all directions from the property line. And this project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments regarding the project, and staff's recommendation is to approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the special use permit PSP fourteen dash zero three nine. And that concludes staff's.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions for Dana? No? Okay. I'll open up the public testimony portion of the hearing there. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and present testimony to the planning commission on this issue? Seeing none? Oh, yes, please, come forward, give us your name and address for the record.
There's more for the fun of this. This is Tom Mulholland, five-five-zero-five, South Hills Valley Road, Orange Cove, California, nine-three-six-four-six, been there all my life. And this project is kind of fun to look at this, because nineteen seventy-six, I got a degree as an urban planner, and now a farmer. But, and we coined environmental impact reports at that time. So, it's what's going on with SEQA, which isn't, wasn't even around at that time, and the proliferation of all this representation from different committees and responsibilities to approve this project is, to me, it's, 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 it's an educational process in its own sense, but now that I see that you've done it and I thank you, I'm sure you're going to approve it, but just anyway, I wanted to make that short comment on this, on a structure this kind and size of what it takes nowadays to, from the back when I was doing all this kinds of work, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anybody else, else like to provide testimony? Okay. Seeing none, and I'll move it back to the commission, we have a recommendation.
I move that we approve special use permit PSP fourteen dash zero three nine and the categorical exemption.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Pilianno.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion has passed. Moving on to item B, which is another.
Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me?
Say that, oh, he did. I'm sorry.
Never mind. Didn't hear you. Just testing you. Got to stay awake on these things. All right. Okay. Okay, item six B is a special use permit, number PSP thirteen dash zero six seven. This is Silver City Mountain Resort. This is a categorical exemption and a special use permit, to amend a special use permit, PSP eighty-eight dash zero eight three, for an existing non-conforming use, which is a resort, to allow onsite sale of alcoholic beverages, limited to beer and wine, served in an existing restaurant at the Silver City Mountain Resort on a fifteen-point-three-seven acre parcel in an RA zone. The site is located on, property located on the north side of Mineral King Road in Silver City, and April is our contact. Go ahead, April.
Good morning, Chairman Diaz and commissioners. I'm April Hill, a planner two in county's Planning and Project Processing Division. Normally, a use permit for alcohol sales are administratively approved by the planning director, but, and they're normally located in commercial zone. The resort is in a rural, in a rural residential zone, and therefore requires approval by your planning commission. The resort was established in the nineteen thirties with a restaurant, and while we were at it, we took the opportunity to upgrade and review and upgrade the nineteen eighty-eight use permit. Subject site is not within an urban area or urban development boundary, but is in the Silver City Mountain Service area and designated for mixed use by the general plan update. It's also in the, part of the unadopted South Sierra Plan area of the mountain framework did plan. Falls is in compliance with relevant policies of the general plan elements upon conditional approval of the special use permit. No aerials available up there, but Sequoia National Park surrounds the properties to the northeast and west, and the National Park Service has a scenic easement on the property, which was recorded with a grant deed in nineteen ninety. The easement requires concurrence of the park superintendent for any building permits. And the site does have direct access to Mineral King Road, which is county-maintained. Public works had no conditions. As I said before, the property itself is zoned rural residential, intended for residential use, with use permits required for most businesses. It's considered legal non-conforming, because it was established before nineteen forty-seven, when the zoning became effective. Properties to the northeast and west include federal lands and the Mineral King Game Refuge. To the west are, is a Silver City Forest Homes subdivision, recorded in nineteen twenty-eight and nineteen thirty-two. Our south, our property's zoned R-one, also part of Silver City Forest subdivisions. They include scattered rural residences. The resort restaurant has no history of legal sales of alcohol that would allow the use to be grandfathered, but alcohol sales are considered an expansion of the restaurant, which the planning commission has the authority to conditionally approve. Biological resources, the California Natural Diversity Database shows no known species of concern on or near the site. The elevation is about sixty-nine hundred feet and it's pine forest. Site's in a flood hazard zone X, no flood avoidance measures required. Resort is not near a wetland or a parry area or a lake or a waterfowl refuge. Conditions of approval are included to prohibit new septic systems within a hundred feet of the banks of a creek that's showing there. There'll be minimal land disturbance for the, for the alcohol sales in the restaurant, although the restaurant is getting, has, has a building permit pending for expanding. Here's an overview of the fifteen acres of property, showing the topography and the roads, locations of cabins scattered throughout, and other structures. Site itself contains a store building with a restaurant, about fourteen guest cabins, eight with bathrooms, two central restrooms with showers, two staff cabins, miscellaneous accessory buildings, playground, above-ground propane tanks for generating electricity, water tanks for potable water and fire suppression supply, fire hydrant system, septic systems, and paved private roads most of the way through. Since two thousand and six, the staff cabins have had state-of-California employee housing permits, which are monitored by county building inspectors. Conditions of approval are carried over from the nineteen eighty-eight use permit and are included in the project, including that the applicant must comply with requirements for building permits. Here's the site plan of the store and the restaurant building where the applicant has been selling alcohol, beer and wine, at the existing restaurant, both inside the building and on a patio. The restaurant has a Tulare County Environmental Health Services Division permit to operate and is required to have a state alcoholic beverage commission license. The applicant has stated that the resort relies on those sales of beer and wine to balance out. Here's some photos, here's the entrance from the west off Mineral King Road. It's a building that houses the store and the restaurant, and you can see the patio dining in front and the parking area. Restaurant dining areas on the patio and inside, just one, one cluster of the rental cabins. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Visalia Times Delta with a ten-day public comment period. No comments were received. This ends staff report. Do you have any questions for me or for the resort manager, Michael Seagrave, who's here with us today?
Anybody, go ahead, John. I just wanted to add to what April presented. That's sort of in my backyard, I was there over the weekend, actually, and one of the cabin owners that was noticed as a nearby owner, actually, a couple of weeks ago, had a concern about that, because I don't know how many of you have been up the Mineral King Road, but it has six-hundred-and-ninety-some hairpin turns. So it's not the kind of road that you want to have someone have too many drinks before they take it on. So it's not the kind of road that you want to have someone have too many drinks before they take it on. So there was a little concern. Um, the manager's well aware of that. One of the things about having beer and wine up there is it's mostly for the use of the guests that stay there. And the cabin owners themselves, they will regulate people that stop in there after a backpacking trip or what have you. The cost of $7.50 a bottle will keep down some of the folks from having too many. A glass of wine's about 10 or 12. So, um, it's really not a problem. It's, that store's been open for, you know, several generations. And this is the first management that has actually offered, um, beer and wine. There's no package sales available. And, uh, another thing I can add is it's not illegal to drink in the campground, so a lot of people bring up their own. So this is really kind of a, um, a regulated and I think a very appropriate use. So, and I, like I said, they do a great job up there and it's a very necessary service for people that want to go up there and, uh, stay in a cabin or have a nice meal while they're up there.
Anybody else have any comments? No? John, would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Oh, we got to open up the public, the public here. Sorry, there counsel. Like to open up the, uh, public testimony portion now. Is there anybody that would like to, uh, come forward and provide testimony on this issue? Now would be the time. Give us your name and address for the record.
Forgot one.
Uh, Michael Seaward. My address is 1536 East Monte Vista Court, Visalia. Um, I'm the general manager of Silver City Mountain Resort. I just wanted to thank April very much for her, uh, patience and all of her hard work putting this through. And being, uh, not in a, I guess, a business zone, getting a beer and wine license was a lot bigger project than we anticipated, a lot more money. But, uh, thank you very much for your time and, uh, we hope you approve it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public testimony and now I'll send it back to John.
I'd like to make that motion that we approved the special use permit for PSP 13-067, the Silver City Mountain Resort. And also can we take the categorical exemption as one motion?
Uh, yeah, I believe that's what it says. Yeah, one motion.
And that would be consistent with the SEQA and part of this motion to approve that special use permit.
I'll second the motion. You got second there, Murray? I don't know. Who, who do you have?
Millies.
Okay, thank you.
Holler, huh?
Roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion has passed. Okay, let's see. Moving on to item 6C is again another special use permit, number PSP 14-036. This is a Roman Catholic bishop of Fresno, a corporation, uh, Cole and Samuel Escobar. This is for a categorical exemption and special use permit, uh, PSP 14-036, to allow a church facility or office meeting hall and sign on an appropriate or approximate, uh, one and a half acre portion of a 9.6 acre site comprised of two parcels and an RA zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 104, approximately 1,500 feet east of North Elm Street in the community of Pixley, and Dana is our contact. Go ahead Dana.
Morning again Chairman Diaz and Commissioners. This activity is categorically exempt from SEQA in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction. This project is compatible with this exemption because the proposed 2,160 square foot structure does not involve the use of significant amounts of hazardous substances and does not exceed 2,500 square feet in floor area.
Hey, we could just stop for a minute while they move the partitions and-
Mister, Mister Chairman, there, there'd been a request from some of the people who sup- I believe support this to wait for a while for the consultant to come, but that's up to you.
Uh, do we have an ETA on the consultant? Okay, then what we're going to do then, we're going to take a 10-minute break anyway, just to, uh, allow the, uh, commission to, uh, get more comfortable. And then we'll be back in at, uh, let's come back at five minutes after 10. Okay, it is, uh-
That's a great story.
It's, uh, seven minutes after 10. It's time to reconvene the planning commission meeting here for September 24th, 2014. We are currently in item, um, 6C, which is a, the special use permit, uh, PSP 14-036. Uh, I've already read into the record the, uh, items, uh, details. And, uh, Dana, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. And you did read the details and this is a use permit for a church in Pixley. Is categorically exempt from SEQA and entitlement is from Section 162B, which allows churches in the RA zone subject to approval of a special use permit. The project is consistent with these general plan policies. Located in the urban development boundary of Pixley and the land use designation is low density residential. The low density residential designation establishes areas for single-family residences and allows residential support services such as schools and churches. Project was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County general plan policies. There's more. The project would be located on a one and a half acre portion of a 9.6 acre site comprised of two parcels. The, as mentioned, the site is zoned RA, which is rural residential. Currently undeveloped land. The surrounding properties are zoned for single-family residential use to the south and west and agricultural use to the north and east. The proposal is consistent with the RA zone. An aerial view. As you can see, the site is undeveloped and there are two parcels that are comprised of the entire site. The church will be located on the eastern parcel and there are, as you can see, orchards to the north and the east. The west is vacant currently. It is undeveloped land. And to the south is Pixley Elementary School down here.
Dana, what was that dark spot directly south of the, the site? That right there?
That is just undeveloped land right now. There is nothing on it.
Okay, that, that's not a, that's not a basin or is it?
Irrigation, irrigation.
It's settling basin. Okay, that's what I thought. It looked like it from the scene. Okay, thank you.
This is the site plan. As you can see, the, this is going to be a phase one development of an eventual development that will cover both of these parcels. But the request is to begin with just the one 2,160 square foot office, which will be, uh, used as an office and a meeting room and for the rectory secretary of the church facility. The building will be a modular structure and will be primarily used for twice a week church services, catechism, catechism and religious studies. The expectation is to eventually develop the entire 9.6 acres with additional buildings that would include modular classrooms, multipurpose hall, rectory and church. But the future development would be in phase two and is not expected to occur, to occur for at least five years. And as such, would require an amendment to this use permit and additional SEQA review. The days and hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We expect two employees, the priest and his secretary, to work at the site two or three times per week between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00 PM and on Saturdays and Sundays between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And those are the details of this project, not very many, and, uh, it was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments. I will say that the Pixley Town Council did show some interest early on in the project. And that was when the plan that was submitted included the entire build out, uh, of the future development. But seeing as how they only wanted to start with this one, uh, 2,000 square foot structure and did not expect any future development for at least five years, we toned, we, uh, made the project smaller. And, uh, this is what we're asking for approval today. To approve the categorical exemption and the special use permit, PSP 14-036. And that concludes staff.
Question Dana, uh, it's zoned RA rural residential?
Correct.
Is this allowed?
Yes, with a special use permit.
Any other questions for Dana?
Yes, I do have a question. Um, you said meetings. Are they planning on having, uh, like mass or church in this building?
I don't believe so.
And how, it said in my notes that, um, something about compliant with, uh, fire safety, something about the amount of people, but it doesn't say what that amount of people is.
Well, and the fire warden, fire chief would determine what the occupancy would be allowed inside the building, you know, before occupation. And, you know, that was the, uh, application as submitted, was they made the statement that they didn't know, you know, how many people would be using the building, but it would never exceed the amount allowed by the fire chief.
There, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
That we don't know what is allowed by the fire chief?
Not until the fire chief does his inspection and calculations, and that would happen at the building permit stage. Now, the fire chief could, you know, knowing what the square feet is right now for the building, he could do his calculations. But when I submitted my consultation to him, he did not respond in that manner.
I've had some experience that and the, actually the building permit time is when the different agencies like the building inspector and the fire chief get involved and they, they establish some hard rules, uh, if necessary. So there's that, there's that safety net right there because they won't allow it to go. I mean, if they overuse it, that's another problem, but they set the standard at the time of building permits and it's a good system.
And who, who polices that?
Well, it's up to Dennis Lehman and code compliance. So if they have a complaint, uh, and he has a really good code compliance system that we have in place now and, uh, and the fire department, you know, they do inspections. I mean, they come in my own building, but that's the city. But, uh, the fire and the building department and code compliance, uh-
I mean, for the amount of people that can be in that building. That's, that's mine.
They would, you know, they could show up at, at, at will.
Oh, okay.
And they do show up.
Nancy, I will make a correction that yes, they do expect to have twice a week church services.
Yeah, I, I saw that, but I-
Just now reviewing my staff report.
Thank you.
It, it seems like the hours of operation are kind of restrictive during the week. Is that intentional or?
This is what was submitted with the application.
I would like to hear from the applicant because I think, uh, we shouldn't be restricted. I mean, a church restricting their hours is just asking to be out of compliance code wise. So, but is the applicant here or Dana?
Just, just a minute, Mr. Whitlatch. Let me open up-
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, is he here? So. I'll let you handle that.
All right. Anything else? Okay, well, with that then I will open up a public testimony portion and like to start with the applicant, uh, or the agent for the applicant. Is, uh, anyone here representing the applicant? Please come forward to this microphone over here. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Vanessa Hernandez. I'm at 1487 Sarah in Pixley, uh, 93256. I, I'm not the, I am not, I am the, going to be the secretary for our committee that we have right now. Um, but our consultant is still not here. Um, I can answer any questions. I can attempt to in the meantime.
I had a question about the water. I noticed in the town council letter, they said there is not an existing well on the parcel, but you planned to drill one. Is that correct?
It's correct. There is no water currently. There's no water or electricity.
Has there been any kind of testing done as to, you know?
I am not aware of any of that. I was hoping that he would be here.
Okay, uh, it, it, okay, well, we'll, we'll address that here in a little bit. Are there any other questions for, for that?
Well, I, uh, I really question that you limit your hours. I think you should have, uh, my opinion is you're going to be, the minute you go beyond these hours, then you're, you have a problem with the county. And so realistically, I mean, uh, do you want to operate from 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night at, uh, seven days a week? Or maybe on the weekends till 9:00? I mean, you know, these, uh, I know that in Ivanhoe, these churches are, uh, you know, they end up feeding children. Uh, they have a lot of other programs that develop and, um, I think-
Yeah, and, and I was not aware of the, of the hours on application, but I know that we, that there may be occasions that we will have to be like later services, you know, so, um, how do we, do you, how do we go about changing the numbers?
Well, with 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, would that fit seven days a week?
6:00 AM to when?
10:00 PM?
10:00 PM?
Most likely, to extend them, yes.
What about 9:00 AM on the weekends? I mean, 9:00 PM on the weekends?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, that would have to be something, does it have to be decided now?
We're going to make a decision and you're going to be stuck with it forever. So I'm trying to give you the broadest-
Maybe, maybe Father Logi can help with that because he's, he's here and he may be a better, maybe-
Because you don't know how much you're going to grow and, and we have-
Yeah, well, yeah, as it is right now, we, we do hold catechism in a hall down on Main Street and it has a capacity of 150. And sometimes, you know, we are pushing because it's, you know, our community is growing. And just alone in the Pixley community, we do have 100 children who attend our catechism. So, um, so I know that we are going to have to be moving our hours around with only a, a three by three modular, um, to work with for all those kids and, and classes. So I agree with that. Um, I think our consultant is here, so.
Okay.
Let me ask a real quick concern about the time element. Do you guys maybe hold midnight masses and stuff like that or something?
I know, like for New Years, not for New Years, for Christmas, we do.
You might want to consider that in your hours.
Maybe Mr. Escobar can address that right now.
There is a finding, number six, and it talks about the hours. It says the days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, you know, we can certainly change those numbers, those hours.
Uh, sir, name and address for the record, please.
Samuel Escobar, uh, 266 East Linden, Reegley, California.
Go ahead.
My name is Logi Belones and 232, uh, South Adams Road, Tipton, California.
Uh, so I, I believe there's some questions regarding the, the times for potential masses and so forth. Those that actually would like to have our, uh, the priests, our Father Logi answer those for potentials, um, you know, to, to come, where they have, uh, you know, different religious activities and so forth that could happen.
Uh, Pixley Community is, uh, one of our missions. I have two missions, Woodville and Pixley, and the main church is in Tipton. So, uh, the main office is in Tipton and I go once in a while to tip, to Pixley to, um, uh, coordinate with the activities that are going there. Um, with regards to the masses, actually, right now, we only have one mass there, uh, every Sunday. And, uh, other than that, we have all the activities for catechetical instructions for the children and for the, for the young people. And, uh, basically those are the main activities that we are conducting over there. So, uh, basically, uh, for now, uh, maybe we will not be able to open, uh, uh, an office there because we don't have a permanent secretary to, they all go to Tipton to, uh, arrange for any weddings or any other ceremonies. But our main purpose in this, uh, uh, area right now is to be able to, uh- or any other ceremonies, but our main purpose in this area right now is to be able to house the, I mean, to be able to have a space for our catechetical instructions for the children and for our religious celebrations.
Father Logi, what I think we're trying to do here, one of the things, is to kind of determine what hours of operation you would, you would need, and we're kind of flexible, we want to give you all the room so that we don't have to come back here again to amend this thing.
That's right.
So, I know you've got a large site, you're only developing a portion of it now, but down the road, you're probably going to develop the whole thing, and you're going to need to do other activities and need time to do that, so let's set hours of operation today so we don't have to come back down the road when you're, if you're out of compliance.
So, roughly speaking, maybe we can say that, what's in the, in the paper?
What was the current ones that we have?
What you had on here was Monday through Friday, 10 to 5, and Saturday and Sunday, 9 to 5.
Excuse me, but you do also have two to three times a week between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM?
That was for the priest and the secretary.
Well, but I mean, it's still hours of operation, so.
Okay, well...
Probably the latest.
Probably, yes, in terms of having some meetings that we conduct, probably that's the time that we need, timeframe.
So, I think maybe if we can extend the time, even the Monday through Friday, because there is, like I said, there's leadership groups that meet after hours when they're planning and for events and so forth, and maybe we can extend it to maybe even the Monday through Friday up to 10:00 PM, I'm not sure if that's, if you guys, if as a group, they go past that, and it's just a meeting to discuss the activities and who's doing what, and I'm not sure if you feel okay with that, Father, and also for the board, if that's, to extend it to 10:00 PM, I'm not sure that they go past that time frame now.
How about a start, how about a start time? Or at least at 9:00 o'clock?
I think 9:00 would be, would be okay as well.
Okay, what about?
Special events?
Yeah, well, certainly some special events, but do you expect to have, I think we heard there's going to be services here a couple of times a week, is that correct? Would you have any time in the future when this is built out, midnight masses and stuff?
No, we usually have our services not later than 10:00 in the evening.
Okay, all right, I'm talking about, all right, that'll be fine then. So your activities, you're thinking, you're saying from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
And is that going to be seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to note, this is, again, this is like what Father Logi said, this is a mission, so it's not, you know, the, the main church is Tipton, so they're just having, this is a, you know, five-year, when I spoke to Dana about this, this is only five years right now, and the build-out is, you know, maybe 20, 30 years from now.
Right.
And as we talked about, even future development or buildings, you know, that might not take, you know, it might not be five years, it might be 10 years, because it is a low-income community and disadvantaged community, so to, you know, collect funds and when they do their fundraising, it's harder for them to do it, because it's a smaller community. So we might not see a build-out, you know, of the complete site for 30, 40 years.
Okay, yes, Father Logi?
Just a little thing, on Sundays, we normally celebrate our masses at 7:30 in the morning.
Right.
Because of our schedule in other, in other missions and other parishes, so just on Sunday.
Okay, are we okay with Sunday, 7?
Wouldn't it be easier just as a commission, if we just say 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, seven days a week?
Yes.
Make it wide, they can operate within that. All right. Is that a significant change, because it hasn't been noticed, or, I mean, it has been noticed, but is that a big, significant change in the notice?
I don't think the hours of operation would be such a significant change as to warrant further notification.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, would you guys be all right with 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week? All right, any other questions here for the, for the Father, or the, for Mr. Escobar?
I just, you know, it seems to me that we're, you know, we're talking about approving a permit, and we don't have a building yet, that's, that's correct, and so then, when we apply for a building permit, then we test the parcel and determine whether, number one, there's water and sufficient sewage capability and that sort of thing.
That is correct, this would be conditioned to have all the water and sewer requirements in place before, as any standard house or commercial use would have.
Because I saw that the Pixley area doesn't have utilities hookup for this parcel.
Correct, they'd be on septic and well.
Yeah, and this, this property is outside of the, the community facilities district for the water district, so it's just outside of their sphere of influence, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't even allow us to hook up to there unless we get annexed into the district, but they wouldn't give us, you know, a will-serv letter or anything like that, so for, our intention is temporarily have a well and also a septic system for the project.
I'm just wondering, you know, is water problematical out there, because I know it is everywhere else, so.
Yeah, and it's starting to become, you know, problematic, and that's where we'll have our, our testing done for the well, if we move forward, that'll be the first thing that we do, is test for that.
And just to assure the planning commission, the environmental health department would be involved in that well as well, and yes, to answer your question, there are, there are water issues in the area, so pending a finding of actual water with the well drilling, they would not be able to move, move forward unless they had that in place.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a large crowd out here, I'd like to have a show of hands of those that plan on providing testimonies today, or, and, and if we do have a number of people providing testimony, we'd like to limit that to, to probably three minutes per individual, and to testimony that is new testimony, and not just to repeat what has been said prior. So, I'm going to ask Maria to stand and say that in Spanish, so that everybody's aware. Go ahead, Maria.
Si pueden levantar las manos las personas que van a dar testimonio ahora frente del comité?
Okay.
Les vamos a pedir que no más limiten su tiempo a tres minutos por individual para que todas las personas puedan tener tiempo para decir su testimonio.
Thank you, Maria. So with that, let's start with those that would be in favor of this project, please come forward, give us your name and address, and if you need translation, Maria's available to do that.
Todas las personas que están a favor del proyecto, por favor, vengan frente para dar su testimonio.
Just one at a time.
Una a la vez, por favor.
Unless, 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 unless one is going to be the spokesman and say...
A menos que una persona vaya a hablar en representación de todas las demás. Por favor, diga su nombre y su número para el otro.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Margarita Estrada, y vivo en el 575 East Compton in Pixley. Tengo 12 años sirviendo la comunidad católica in Pixley. Tenemos 12 años rentando un salón para dar catequesis, yo soy catequista, 12 años. He trabajado con jóvenes.
Espera un segundo para te decirlo.
Yeah, we need a little help here.
Ella es Margarita, ¿verdad?
I'm okay with it.
¿Cómo se apellida?
Thank you.
Her name's Margarita Estrada, she works, she lives in 575 East Compton in Pixley. She says she's been with the community in Pixley renting for 12 years, and she's renting a place to do catechism classes for 12 years.
Tengo 23 años que llegué a este país.
She's been here for 23 years.
Desde que llegué, yo he escuchado que este es el país de las oportunidades.
She's heard that this is the place of opportunity.
Yo quisiera una oportunidad para tener mi salón, para darle catequesis a los jóvenes de Pixley, es una oportunidad para ellos, para aprender nuestra fe, y que pueden salir del gangas, he tenido jóvenes que han tenido problemas con su retiro espiritual que tienen, han salido de eso.
She would like the opportunity to teach her, teach the students catechism in her own room, to avoid kids from going into gangs, and to show kids their faith.
Con las actividades que tenemos en todo el año catequético, hemos logrado sacar jóvenes adelante.
With, with all the activities that they've had, they've been able to take children, push them forward to get them out of gang situations.
Dos o tres jóvenes que salvenos por año, para mí es un gozo servirle a Dios y que salgan adelante sus niños y jóvenes.
Two to three adolescents that they are able to save from these situations is enough for her.
Ojalá que cumplan mi sueño de tener ese salón, gracias.
She hopes that you guys can grant her wish to get her classroom.
Thank you. Anybody else? Maria, ask if there's anyone else.
La siguiente persona, por favor. Buenos días, mi nombre es María Arévalo, también soy de Pixley, vivo en el 1487 Sarah Avenida in Pixley, y también estoy unida a este proyecto de iglesia ahí in Pixley desde el 2002, estamos trabajando para esta meta que tenemos, de tener un lugar donde reunirnos a predicar la palabra del Señor y que los niños, estoy esforzando, apoyando lo que Margarita nos dijo, son mis mismos proyectos, mis mismas metas, de que alcancemos toda la juventud a sacarla de gangas, pandillas y todo eso, porque hay mucha pandilla y eso, porque no saben el valor de la vida, que la vida Dios no la dio para conservarla, no para quitarla, entonces estos catechismos que damos a los niños, instrucción, esta instrucción de Dios les sirve a ellos para salirse de esos malos caminos.
Okay, her name's Maria, ¿cómo se apellida?
Arévalo.
Arévalo, she lives at 1487 Sarah Avenue in Pixley, she says she's been working in this project since 2002, working towards the goal to meet all of God's words, and she says she, her goal is to get the kids out of the, out of these situations.
Y es por eso estamos pidiendo este permiso para tener un local donde unirnos a practicar nuestra fe.
She wants to get a place to where they can unite and have, to meet, so they can practice their faith.
And I wish you, let us have this permit for, to have this, thank you so much.
Thank you.
La paz.
Who's next?
The person.
Hi, my name is Miguel Ramirez, I live at 170 South Main Street in Pixley. Dear friends, supervisors, I'm asking you, please approve this project. This town has been founded in 1888, so I feel like by the 21st century that we're in, we, we have been over 125 years that we don't have a Catholic church in town. I feel like we have been deprived from our civil rights. I'm representing, you know, the population of Pixley, and I'm speaking on behalf of them, because we need a Catholic church. Most towns that I know of here in California, they got their own Catholic church, founded at least 50 years ago, and in 2014, we don't have none, so please do help us in dealing with this issue. I know you guys will do something about it, so before you make a vote, think about us, we're about 2,500 people in town, we're not too many, but 80% of us are Catholics, so instead of going to Tipton, or Early Mart, or Delano, or even Tulare, why don't you guys help us in dealing with your own thing and be part of this great society? That's what I gotta do, thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Miguel Trujillo, y vivo en el 825 West Stanford in Pixley, y mi comentario es de que, este, hubo cuando hicieron la primer junta en Pixley tocante al plan, este, se habló de una contaminación, de, que hicimos una fiesta ahí, que hubo, que la tierra que salta los árboles, ¿verdad?, que contamina los árboles, la basura, pero yo a la persona que dijo eso, lo que le quiero decir es que los árboles de la almendra, cuando los unigan, esa es contaminación también, y ahorita en Pixley acaban de levantar la almendra, si ustedes van y miran cómo está Pixley de tierra, esa es contaminación, y es todo lo que le quiero decir a esa persona que dijo que se fijen eso, ¿verdad?, principalmente que tiene huertas y que usa pesticidas, gracias.
His name is Miguel Trujillo, he lives at 824 West Stanford in Pixley, he said at the first meeting that they had in Pixley regarding this project, one of, someone spoke in regards to contamination in trees from the soil, and he just wanted to say that there's almond trees there, and anytime you spray them, that's contamination as well, that they can get contamination from different areas, so this would not be any issue for them to have.
Okay, thank you.
Hello again, do I need to say?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I'm Vanessa Hernandez at 1487 Sarah in Pixley, I just wanted to add, when we did, when we had our town council meeting in Pixley, there was an issue brought up that we had been having fundraising events on the property, and that's correct, we did, and we, the issue was that we were causing a lot of dust to be raised, because a couple, two or three years back, there was some horses that were brought onto the property to do kind of like a rodeo thing. I was not involved in that situation, I wasn't involved in the church at that time, so I'm not sure exactly how, what went down with the sheriff or whatever. Since last year, 2000, since May of 2013, I have been involved in the committee, we did have one, one event at the, in May last year, and it was at the property, we, we had, we sold alcohol there, because it was a fundraising event, we had our permit, we applied for the permit, sheriff knew about it, everything was fine, and since, we did have, at the meeting was also brought up that the noise was an issue, because we had live music, and so it is rural, rural, there is no, you know, we're out in the open, so it does get, you know, the loud is going to move, I mean, the sound will travel. Anyway, since then, we have taken into consideration that, you know, the noise could be an issue for some people, so we have, since August of last year, we've moved all of our fundraising events to the memorial building in town, just to prevent any kind of issues with any neighboring property owners, so I think that may be an issue that may be brought up today, so I just wanted to note that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is that it for those that are in favor, Maria?
Eso es todo el testimonio que van a presentar las personas que están a favor del proyecto.
Okay, how about those that may be in opposition, please come forward.
Hay gente que está contra este proyecto.
Good morning, my name is Jim Moorhead, I reside at 1249 North Elm, Pixley, I own the 160 acres that is to the north of the property, it's all planted in almond trees. First of all, I want to say that I've lived in Pixley all my life, and I've been in a church all my life, worship is important to me, and I believe that there needs to be a Catholic church in Pixley for these people. I just have an issue of where it's going. I want to bring some facts before you, and just kind of let you know what's going on around that property. I think it was bought by them probably five, six years ago, I'm not sure, there was real estate agents that were very aggressive in, to the property to the west, in subdividing it, and getting housing going in there during the boom. Pixley couldn't grow, because we had no utility, or the sewer system had to be upgraded, so we missed that whole boom, that ground set empty for a long time, they bought it, they bought their property. To the west has been developed, it's in fourth-year almonds at this point, so they're just, they have almonds on three sides of their property, and the water dis, not the water district, but the irrigation district has the 10 acres behind the property, that the water ends right there, that's a sinking basin. I have seen that break out and flood the area. In 1969 would be the biggest issue of that, when Deer Creek broke out at Frank Kern Canal, and came down through, and Avenue 164 broke back into the canal system and brought all that water into Pixley, ending up right there beside the school, breaking out there, and putting the memorial building and that area in three foot of water. and that area in three foot of water. So I just want you to be aware of that. One of our biggest concerns is the right to farm. We were there well before this was developed. And as I say, there's trees on three sides of it. Those properties will probably never be developed because I think some of you know the price of trees today is worth more than houses. And they, I'm sure will stay there. It's three quarters of a mile for them to walk to that facility from town. There's no pathways or anything to get there. We're concerned about what we heard. And this is our biggest concern. Now, now we're saying six to 10, is that correct? Or six to midnight, seven days a week? The ag commissioner's office mandates that we give a quarter mile. If we don't have at least a quarter mile from them, we can't spray unless there's nobody at the property. So if this happens, our only time to spray those trees is from midnight to 5:00. So what are we gonna do? We feel like we were there first. We have the right to farm.
When do you spray? I'm a city boy, so.
Sure.
What's the best time?
Mornings. Obviously, when the sun's out, so you can see what you're doing.
And no wind, right?
And no wind. That's correct.
So it must be early then.
That's correct.
You say you're not spraying after 10.
Oh yeah, we are, yeah.
Oh yeah.
If it's less than 10 miles an hour, we're legal to spray.
So you're spraying basically all morning long till noon?
Oh wait, no, we're spraying all day long. I mean, you can't, you have to use your equipment to its ability. And you can't have 10 pieces to do it in two hours. You have three pieces and use the whole day. That's...
How do you actually spraying on almonds?
I'm sorry?
What are you actually spraying on almonds? What's the spray composed of?
Well, we're spraying fungicides, we're spraying for mites, we're spraying for twig bore. We're, there's, there's a lot of different sprays. We probably put eight to 15 a year on, through the year, on those trees.
How many times a year do you spray? I didn't hear.
Like it's eight to 15, according to how bad.
Times?
Times, yes.
And which months are those?
There's not a month that it couldn't be.
Every month?
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that there's a different restriction because it's a gathering place? I live by almond orchards and they're spraying all the time.
Yeah, churches, schools, anything like that, we have restrictions.
It's not resident, if it was just.
Well, residential too, yes. Yeah.
So that, that area was already approved previously as for residential because you said they were.
It's always been RA to my knowledge. I don't think it's ever been in the Williamson Act, but it has a history of grapes. I farmed it for 10 years. And then the big boom came and they thought they were gonna put houses and all of that to the east of this property. So I think that's why the Catholic church brought there. But they're actually facing away from town. They're not part of town. And it's three quarter miles to get there without a path and very narrow roads.
So if you had some way to protect yourself 14 times a year that no one would be there, would that solve the problem?
We don't know when those sprays are gonna be. And it's in between water.
But you have to notify the ag department, right? When you do that?
Yes, well, if it's a certain material, but we don't use those type of materials. We have to tell them when we spray, yes.
Okay. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, we want to definitely put in the record, you're stating that's a thousand-foot buffer between your spraying and the buildings if they are occupied at that time?
If there's people present.
People present, 1,000 feet.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Neil Westbrook, 2339 North Elm in Pixley. And I own the property to the east. And right now, I've got, part of the property is right next to the Pixley School. So when I'm, when there's kids there, I move to the other side of the property, which is where the church will be, and I spray that side until the kids are gone. And then I can move back. And so I gotta kind of work back and forth to be able to do all my spraying. And that's...
Mr. Westbrook, we've got a Google map. Where are you?
I'm just on the east side of it right now.
On the, on the east side?
Yes.
Okay, that's to our right?
Yeah.
In that zone, is that zoned agriculture zoning?
Yes, yes.
Dana, what is that below that, is that a school there?
Yes.
Like a track?
Yes, that's the Pixley School there. So it's right where that side of the arrow there, I farm all that too. So if the school is in session or they're at the baseball park, if there's kids there, I go to the other side, on that side of the property, the upper end, and I.
I think it's a baseball park that you see.
It's part of the school grounds that there is where the bowling.
Well, due south of that site though is a school, correct?
Yes, that's all school there.
And there's a track to.
Baseball park.
Go ahead, Mr. Westbrook.
Yes, that's the baseball park and the track and the irrigation district's got two reservoirs there for sinking ponds. There's one there and it's.
So there's already humanity operating in that area?
Yes.
Not like there's nobody there?
Right, right. But the way it is now, I can, I can move to the other end of the property and I can keep, keep working during the days.
So the church would present the same kind of a problem on.
Yes, I'll have to work around that too. It's just, so, thank you.
Probably less of a problem because they're not there as many times as the school people. Is that correct?
Well, until they get it all developed, fully developed, then.
And what they want now initially is they want 2,000 square feet.
Yes.
Six AM to 10 AM?
Yes.
Potential, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westbrook.
Good morning, my name is Betty Moorhead. I live at 1249 North Elm in Pixley. And I serve on the school board. I also serve on the Tulare County Library Board and the County Redevelopment Dissolution Committee. And I serve on the Tulare Regional Medical Center Oversight Board. But why I'm here is I attended the town council meeting on June 23rd. I met many of these people and talked with them. And we had a good discussion about the concerns and things. And I think you have the town council's response in your packet. And you will see that, you know, they address traffic, water, and the compatibility of surrounding areas. Everyone supports bringing a Catholic church. I'm a person of faith and I have family members that are Catholic. And this is not about not bringing the Catholic church to Pixley. But it is about compatible use. And whenever we looked at this at June 23rd, it was the full application. And it talks about a new church, new office, classrooms, multipurpose hall, erectory, the worship center that would seat 500, fixed seating, which is a very large building. And I hear you talking about wanting not to come back and things. And I was really disappointed and a little distraught over, this is an email, the statement in an email sent from Ms. Matlin to the town council. And it says, "Please see the attached revised site plan for the proposed church project PSP 14036. As noted, all proposed future development five years out has been removed from the site plan because additional development would require an amendment to the use permit." And I give pause to the process that knowing the scope of the project, why we would take this little section out, it's kind of like we're working on building, some building at the school and to say, "Well, we're gonna build the bathrooms. So if you would approve the bathrooms, you know, that would help us," you know. But we're talking about long-term use. This, even though real estate came in and subdivided that field, it's never had a house on it. It's never had a street drawn on it. It came out of ag use for a year or two and went right back in. The entire history of this area is agricultural use. And since I also am a grower, and it's, it's not as simple as saying there's so many days you spray because when your pest control advisor comes and says, you know, "You have peach twig bore, you're on it or you lose your crop." It's not saying, "Well, we can't, we can only spray on Friday or whatever." And, and we, and the school's a little easier to work with because of more concise hours. You have weekends. And it's not just, you know, spraying goes on all the time, but it's not a future planned thing. Some years, the bugs aren't bad. And a lot of asbestos, it's not a chemical, it's just a protectant on the tree. But, and trees are near to this area, so, you know, we were third-generation cotton farmers and transitioned over. But I just think it's really important. And being involved with the school, I have a concern. I know a lot of the children do participate in the catechism. We're a walking community. If you look at our demographics, we have one of the lowest ratios of cars per people in the entire state. And so we are a walking community. I'm concerned about the location of children. Elm is kind of a thoroughfare street and it goes all the way down to the end. And traffic does move rather wide on it, but it's not a wide street and the sides are just dirt. Orland, the northern boundary, is a smaller street and with their proposed 500 seating capacity. And usually the average is about 2.5 people per car. You know, we're talking about putting 150 cars on a road. And I, I know the county does their best to maintain our roads, but rural roads are very poor. So you have to move over to, not go in the pothole and ruin your tire. But, but it's a small road. And so we're putting this large facility that exits onto the smallest road. And, and it just concerns me. And when, and I appreciate her statement because we did have some problems early on and those have been addressed. But one of the things that happened early on was people were parking in our orchards. And one, we couldn't work the orchards into, they left behind debris and trash. But, so, you know, if we're putting 500 people in there, that scenario again could happen. And that's a narrow road. And the only way to get off the road is to actually be in the orchard. And so, so I'm just concerned though about not addressing the whole scope of the project. Because I think it's unfair and that they would be allowed to spend their money developing these properties, drilling a well. But then when the next part comes, we find out it's not compatible. There was no traffic study done on those numbers of cars. And I just feel like it's a, and I don't know if it was deliberate, I think it was just trying to help the project. But it seems like a little bit of manipulation of the special use permit to draw it down to such a small size from what they really want it to be. And you can say it may be five, 10, 20 years, but once you have the permit, you have the permit. You know, and we just heard them talking about the silver property in the mountains. You know, and that dates back to the 20s and 30s and 40s. You know, but once you're there, you're there. And so I, I ask you to give pause to looking at this. The town council, in their request, did ask for, they may not have used the correct term, but, you know, an environmental review. But one of those reviews is impact on the roads, you know, and, you know, those kinds of things. And, you know, the well situation was addressed in the town councils. I mean, you don't just call up and get a well these days unfortunately because we're still in line for one, you know, that we're waiting for. But I just ask that you seriously consider because once this is granted, it's there. And, and I don't think the properties were well identified. They were called vacant properties. They're not, they're fully producing income for a family. There's three different growers involved there. And then the sinking basin is behind. And then the school district is behind there and we have, and, and the school has no problem. We adjoining, our middle school borders the orchard on the left. And that grower, you know, accommodates, he knows the school hours. And it works. And sometimes if there's a special event or a tournament, they're aware of it, you know. And it's just that because our chemicals, a lot of our chemicals are fungicides or they're not chemicals, they're, you know, like fertilizer and things. So it's not like you're noticing the ag commissioner. You just have to send in your use reports so that they know what has been applied in the area. So there's kind of different levels of things that go on there. But I, I want to help the Catholic church come to Pixley and be huge and successful because they are a generous and very charity-based organization. But I still think we have to look, because the right to farm was one of the things listed in that list of notifications. And we received a notification about this. I don't think Mr. Westbrook did, but anyway, but it's important. And we ask that you give great consideration to this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there anybody else in opposition that would like to speak? If you see none, we'll close the public testimony portion. Move back to the commission and staff here for discussion or recommendation.
Think you normally give a chance to rebut or no?
Okay, let's do that. Let's reopen it. I'll give the applicant a chance for rebuttal on this.
And thank you, Commissioner, for that. I think, you know, and when we talk about development and I think nobody, no community in the Central Valley would be affected by development taking place adjacent to farmland. That's what our Central Valley is. So those impacts were always going to be seen. This property was purchased with the intent for to develop, you know, a long-term development for a Catholic church with the, you know, the new facilities. Most of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of the board and the commission today is items, I think, that can be addressed and with, you know, working together, those can be addressed. There's not going to be residents at this site at all times. The hours of operations that you have asked us for, those are just, you know, times that we'll have. But there will be scheduled times when we'll have staff there, potentially the father and so forth. But a lot of these things that have been brought up, there are challenges we deal with. Just like Commissioner, he lives next door to an almond orchard. You know, there's a school already there. You know, when we, we talk about development, this is already zoned, I think, in the general plan for single-family, whether it's single-family, multifamily, commercial, there's always going to be an impact. And this is an impact that will have. But we're, we're talking about something that's not going to develop, you know, fully develop until 30 or 40 years because of the, the finances and the economy that you have in Pixley with its residents. So I think a lot of these concerns that have been brought up, it's something that you'll have everywhere with any kind of development that you have in Pixley, Tipton, and anywhere else in Tulare County because you'll have that growth. If not, you're not, as a county and the communities, you will not allow them to grow because you'll have these impacts. So with that, I urge you to really consider this project to move forward. We're, we're taking a small step forward for the, the members of this community so that they have their adequate space so they can conduct their religious beliefs and practices with catechism and particularly have the mass there as well. So they have sustainability within their, their organization. Where they're currently now, they're providing those services, but in a rental facility. Where from one day to the next, they can be kicked out and, you know, so they don't have any assurances that they can, they can even operate within the community. And this is what gives them that, that long-term sustainability and understanding that this community will continue to, to give back to its community by providing these services.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Thank you, Mr. Escobar. Okay.
It's just a clarification for you.
All right, come, make it quick, please. We'll need your name and address again, or your name, anyway.
Betty Moorehead, 1249 North Elm, Pixley. Just to clarify you about the setup of the community of Pixley. Where the school is, that's it. That's the end of town. And where the top of the school is, is the end of town. Everything north and east is all farming, is all agriculture. Pixley goes all west. The school is the very end of the developed part of Pixley. And the north boundary of the school is the end of the developed part of Pixley. That this parcel is not actually in the community.
I understand. Thanks for the clarification, Mrs. Moorehead. Take care. Okay, now with that, we will close the public testimony portion. Mr. Bach?
Chairman Diaz, staff at this time, we do support our recommendation for approval. This project is within the urban development boundary, this project does comply with zoning, this project was zoned within the urban development boundary, future development. There will be a right-to-farm notice that would be given to the applicant. They are subject to environmental health regulations as regards to well-drilling and septic tanks, and they are, are aware of their current conditions as being surrounded by agricultural land. However, there is a concern by opposition here that is also referenced in the, and I was also at those town council meetings, in fact, I was a subject to much of this discussion. And, we've discussed with Betty, as we've gone through the process on the Pixley community plan as well, the urban development boundary and the interface between development and agricultural lands. But what I would like to suggest, based on Betty's suggestion here, that we do take pause and give the opportunity to the applicant to talk to the opposition, and we bring this matter back to the planning commission, that's the next planning commission hearing, so you can hear what both sides say. We want to verify the actual distance that is required. We're not, we're not exactly certain it's 1,000 feet. Well, and if this project can accommodate the timeframe, the timeframes for the spraying, there might be a little, little accommodation on the farmer's part here, but like I said, they would have a right-to-farm notice provided to the, the applicant. So I, I think wisdom in this matter would be to pursue coming back at another date, having the parties actually sit down and talk.
Okay, thank you.
And we did, for the record, also give Sharon Herbert and the Pixie Town Council notice at the last town council meeting of this meeting today, and we do not see any other members of the Pixie Town Council here today.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Bach. Yes, go ahead.
One comment, growing up in Early Mart, I know that the Catholic Church there is right next to grape farms, and it's always been that way. And I'm not sure how they've mitigated this issue, and that might be something to look at as well.
Yeah, that, that is correct. The, the difference is, as the regulations change, the ag commissioner's duties change, and the, the farmer has to adjust accordingly as far as to the distance they're allowed to spray from occupied buildings. So, I mean, to say, you would say they're grandfathered in, not to use the absolute term grandfather, but they, they preexisted some of those regulations in regards to spraying.
Just one quick comment, I'm still very concerned about the hours of operation not being unrealistic. And so, in your discussion, we need to talk about something that more reflects what the long-term situation is, and then looking at the site, I put on my developer hat, and perhaps it needs to be moved to the parcel to the, to the west and to the south, so it's closer to the school. And then the number of children, because I know the poorer communities, I'm involved with a couple dollar stores, and their parking lots are basically empty because these communities, people don't have cars, they walk. So it's important that it be walkable and connected, so you would take those into consideration for, you know, the next meeting. Thank you.
Let's go ahead, Dan.
Yes, I would like to piggyback on that. That's my concern, is Pixley and the county have been working so hard to do the safe routes, and here we are, we've developed a safe route, and it's the opposite direction from where children are going to go. So that was my question to you, is that a safe route?
Elm has been considered as part of the Complete Streets program. This project, so to say, wasn't necessarily a part of that consideration as far as going, going north of where the school is located now, but we, we did talk about school street in and of itself, and so, it, it's not so far afield, as to say, it's, it's not part of the overall consideration of the Complete Streets program and the circulation element that's going to go into the Pixley community plan update. But it would, it would be a little bit of an addition if it were approved at this time, that we would, we would consider that.
My instinct tells me, you know, maybe it would be better connected on this westerly side, but I'm not totally against where it is. I'm just wondering, what is the authority of the Pixley Town Council? Are they a municipal advisory council, or?
Yes, it's purely advisory, so they're, it's more, it is political, a political advisory.
So they're appointed, or?
I believe they're internally.
They're internally appointed, yeah. Okay, anything else from the commission here?
I'm just asking a question, so this will be continued?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna work on it. Our suggestion to, for the planning commission to make a recommendation.
Okay.
To continue this, this matter, and which number is that, Dana?
Um, four.
Hey Dana, is that your recommendation?
I guess that is my recommendation to make alternative number four, close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and continue the public hearing to a date certain.
I'll make that motion.
I will, I will, I'm gonna amend that.
I have a question. So what is the objective of continuing the hearing? What are, what are the key, what are, tell me, what are the points?
The suggestion is based on the suggestion from opposition that the planning commission take pause and staff would therefore suggest that the spokespeople for the applicant talk with the spokespeople for the opposition and try to arrive at a conclusion that would satisfy both parties in regards to spraying times and as regards to the setbacks and everything else that could be.
So county will mediate that?
The, the county would mediate that process. I, I love to mediate these type of deals, so, yes, thank you.
Is one meeting enough time for that?
I believe so. I think both parties have a clear understanding of what their concerns are at this, for the record, prior to having that meeting, in which case we'd be able to look at what both parties' needs forward, and if they can't resolve the matter, in, in some of these cases, they can't resolve the matter through one meeting, then it's just not going to be resolved, and we'll have a sense at that time.
So the church owns this 9.6 acres?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And there was, I think I heard a comment about moving it to another site? How would that be, how would that happen?
Again, again, as some of the commissioners are aware, you know, they, they do own this, I assume, in fee, and to actually move to another site would require them to purchase other property, so yes, it would be very difficult.
Is the school an option to hold services?
Well, there's a separation.
Can't do that, yeah. Can't do it.
I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to continue this to a time certain, October 8th.
I second that motion.
Maria, is that a good time?
Yes.
Okay, we have a, a motion.
Should the chair, if you, if Maria, if you can make that announcement, that they're going to take an action to continue the item to a certain date, and they will not receive further public hearing days, this is the notice.
El comito, el comité decidió continuar esta audiencia al 8 de octubre. No va a haber otra notificación, esta es su notificación, si gustan venir otra vez, la parte del testimonio ya está cerrado, pero vamos a continuar el, la audiencia el 8 de octubre.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whilich?
Yes.
Hiliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we, the motion has passed, and we'll, we will continue this till October 8th. This is the notice, and we'll see you folks then. Thank you.
Can you take a short five, five-minute break?
You need a five minute, okay. We'll go five minutes. I can't make that meeting, so what do I get, the tapes, or what? Okay, it's, we're gonna reconvene the Teller County Planning Commission for September 24th, 2014. We're moving on to item seven, 7A, is discussion about presentation regarding a suggested cultural resource protocol. And Erin Bach is our contact, so Erin, go ahead.
Chairman Diaz, commissioners, what you have before you today is our draft of documenting cultural and historical resources in Teller County, based on the planning commission's Basically, as an overview, and what we have discussed before is just a protocol on how to approach cultural resources under CEQA in our planning documents. So what we suggested overall is to actually just initially screen the sites and see which sites have potentially significant resources. If those, and go about identifying any existing historical cultural resources as they exist, and figure out whether further study is needed, in which case that we would go forward and suggest to the applicant either hiring professionals or if warranted for our own projects, the county would go forward in hiring professionals. So generally, what can planners do? The, the tier one analysis, which is really going to be based, we believe, on the parcel size, is going to be for projects over 40 acres, and that this is really based on what we've seen from our existing policies, from other communities, state agencies, or professionals' associations. So we kind of take a conglomeration of that information to, to look at how we're going to tier this protocol. So, we'll generally look at the parcel size. For smaller parcels, obviously, the, the assumption would be they're less likely to have cultural resources. So, beginning at the initial threshold of 40 acres would be our, our suggestion for looking at as an area of ground disturbance. If not disturbed, then we'll take a more critical look. Proximity to sensitive geographic locations, that's part of the checklist, that's part of the CEQA guidelines, to look for, for such things as water bodies, hilltops, undisturbed land. We would use that to look if there's any sensitive geographic features that would warrant further analysis. And then, of course, the proximity to historical or cultural resources, and that would require a review of the database of known Teller County historic sites, as suggested by the planning commission. So in other words, if yes to any of the above, then more study is needed, and we move on to tier two. This is a map that we've created in GIS, which basically shows the selected rivers, hills, and summits, which would fit within this tier one protocol, under the proximity to sensitive geographic location. So we use that map as a background information, see whether it trips over that first tier one threshold.
Erin, is the map basically skewed into prehistoric sites? Is that what we're talking about here?
Uh, no, well, basically, it's geographic features. Again, the, looking at existing waterways, where, where there would be potential cultural significant areas. Not necessarily looked at, as you're suggesting, prehistoric rivers or anything else like that. This is existing rivers, as they, as they sit today. Existing summits, existing hills, as they sit. The next tier is, so we've gone past tier one, we said yes to any one of those qualifications, and now we're looking at what, what do we do next? So we would contact State Office of Historic Preservation, Chris, and we would do a record search. We have staff that has been accepted by Chris to do that type of research, we can do it internally. Or if there's any need for great, we need to make the process move any faster, we still have the ability to go to Chris, but we believe if we have the internal staff, we could actually save money to the applicants moving forward, doing this protocol. Of course, as in all CEQA documents, there's a letter sent to the Native American Heritage Commission, they would be contacted by staff to see more on a one-on-one basis if they have any information that we could use to see if there's any cultural resources on that site. And finally, we'd look to actually, RMA actually going out to the site, using the SHPO survey checklist, and we'd also have photo documentation. So again, that's our tier two analysis. Basically, we're looking for cultural resources. If we find any cultural resources based on this analysis, then we move on to, to tier three. And that's really where further, further study is needed. That's out of the hands of staff at that point, and you would hire just the applicant, hiring a consultant, or if it's one of the county's projects, we would hire a consultant. But the, we look for archaeologists, the archaeolo, archaeologist or historian to assist in this matter, and that would include pretty much the standard cultural analysis, the phase one, inventory of cultural resources, the phase two, evaluation of cultural resources, and the phase three, the treatment of impacted significant cultural resources. So, to use the industry standard lingo, we're doing kind of the windshield drive-by on the survey, but we're looking at the, the Chris research, which is what generally gets in front of you as far as a categorical exemption or a negative declaration. We'll be able to make those determinations in-house. If it does require significant mitigation besides the standard mitigation you see in your CEQA documents, then you would have the actual phase one, phase two, and phase three analysis done by the, by the applicant or by the expert hired by the county. So generally, our, our next steps at this point, this commission is in agreement on the, the suggested draft protocol would be to come back to you considering the feasibility. Again, this is a draft, we haven't really gone out to our existing applicants or really done, looked at the costs associated. We have the costs associated with the Chris research on our part, we know exactly what that is, we are willing to fund that portion of it, but the actual cost is kind of that tier three analysis, what, what are the, the breakdown of costs for, for each level. So again, we're, we're, we're gonna be able to do a cost-benefit analysis, looking at what it's costing applicants right now versus how much money we're really, really saving. We do want to develop that map a little bit better, as far as the sensitive sites, that was a very draft preliminary map that you saw today. We do want to get a little bit more involved and really use the CEQA checklist to see what else we can really ferret out of our existing database information to better locate some of the background information. The other part of it is the local database with Teller County historic and cultural sites, it's been suggested that we use an almanac that does exist, and we have looked at that, and that, there's, it's a little bit problematic to us as far as the cost of using the, the almanac and the resources available to us, but we believe there's other databases that we need to look into a little bit better to see if, if that would be a better resource, or if, if it's the planning commission's desire, we would look at the almanac as suggested. And again, that'll be put into our cost-benefit analysis when we bring this back to you. And so, as it sits right now, as I discussed, we, we really have a three-tiered system. Again, it's the initial screening for sensitive sites, and then the further requests for the tier two internal studies, including the site documentation that would be available to you on all these projects, including looking at the history of the, the projects, and then, if warranted, and then moving forward and really be able to tell the applicant, "Hey, you need to do-" hey, you need to do further studies instead of having conditions at the last moment at the podium saying, you will do further studies. We'd like to be able to tell them upfront a little bit better and kind of guide them a little bit better. So those are our next steps, and that concludes staff presentation.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a comment and also a suggestion. On your developing your resources, we know where to go and get the site information because that's the Arquillo Clearing Houses. Hell State Bakersfield is a good place to start. There's also California Inventory of Historic Resources. Every site has a number, even though some of them didn't become California Historic Landmark. For instance, we have a Coeua Post Office in Travers, and it has a number. I'm sure online by now, all that stuff can be pared out of there for Tulare County. And those types of resources should also be plotted on your map. And then, you know, the archaeological stuff being a little more sensitive, that's more a case-by-case. But the historic stuff, we can already have going in, and I don't think that's a big task. It's basically just getting it, downloading those sites for Tulare County. But this is great. I think it's a great start. I'm wondering, 10 years ago when I came on the commission, where this was, and here it is. I see it's based on what they do in a lot of other places, and this is what I'm familiar with too, and I think you guys are doing a good job moving us in the right direction.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you. We will look into that and see, again, if we do believe it's too much of a cost, a resource, staff-wise, we'll bring that back to you, and then you could help us make that decision. If it is something, as you stated, fairly easy, we'll be able to look into and accommodate.
Okay. Mr. Bach, are you going to do the director's report too?
I will begin the director's report as well from here. Again, Erin Bach, Chief Planner with Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Just to give you some updates on what happened at the board yesterday with the R7 project. It's been remanded back to staff to do an EIR, to look at how to resize the project, redesign the project. The applicant and the opposition did negotiate on their own for the most part to, one, try to meet the demands of the opposition as best they could, and they were, they did stipulate to quite a few of their, as they stated, 80% of their concerns. Lot count was still the largest concern. So again, the board suggested that the site in of itself is zoned for that use and that the, but the environmental process in itself still needed to be further analyzed. So that was the decision of the board yesterday, and so that process has begun with staff, and we would be looking towards doing an EIR. That would come back through the Planning Commission for their recommendation. So Planning Commission's recommendation was considered and understood, and it will be brought back to you. As far as some previous concerns about the Visalia General Plan, we did attend the Visalia General Plan Update meeting for the EIR. We have commented in the record, for the most part, our comments were addressed. We will continue to monitor those meetings. But per our discussions with the City of Visalia, as far as our Goshen Plan Update, there's been, our sense, a real pullback on their existing boundary as it sits right now. It still leaves room for growth in the future. They have a tiered system that's a little bit different. It doesn't quite match our UDBs and UABs as they do in other cities throughout the county, but the intent is that Goshen Community Plan Update would move forward without too many issues created by the General Plan Update by the City of Visalia. As far as the community plan updates, we did submit to the agencies the ISM-D, and Hector could talk a little bit more about that portion of it, but we did submit along with the ISM-D, the community plan updates for the unincorporated area of Traver. It's also been given to the, kind of the head spokesperson for the community of Traver, to the principal, and over at the school over there. So they've, we've gone through the complete streets process. That'll be brought to the board, I believe, at the next board meeting to move forward to TCAG, back to TCAG. But the community plan update itself is completed, and that's been submitted. And when that, the ISM-D will come back to you for recommendation because this is a general plan amendment, and will require a rezoning of property, so that would come back to you. Just update of Goshen and Pixley, those are both moving forward. Goshen's getting pretty close to being wrapped up here. The, of course, the Overpass project, there's a lot of questions being raised again as they begin to do the condemnation process through Caltrans. So we've been there for every two weeks for the last six months, so I'm sure at the tail end here, we'll get quite a bit of more people showing up at our workshops. We're also going forward on quite a few other community plans, including the East Porterville Community Plan as part of our settlement agreement with Porterville. So all those will come back before you over the next year, so I think that's nine, nine community plans, as we sit today, that we're currently either about to initiate or in process of working on. That concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it over to Hector if he wants to talk about the ISM-D for Traver.
Thanks, Erin. Erin, Chief Environmental Planner, RMA. As Erin noted, we released the Traver ISM-D last week, so that would be September 18th. It has to go through a 30-day review period, so that will end in October 19th, or 17th, I'm sorry. And we don't anticipate any adverse comments. It's such a small community, we're not changing the footprint. We're changing some land use policies. We're putting in some mixed use. We would, obviously, in our community, in our areas, water supply is always a concern. That fluctuates, but it's going to have such small growth, we believe that the existing provider can continue to provide adequate water. Every project has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis anyway, so they do have no capacity, but they will evaluate everything. They could probably pump a little more. The thing is like the distribution system, you know, where you put in your housing, it's not there yet, so. But we don't anticipate very much growth. One thing that did happen last week, and you may have heard about it in the local newspapers, is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service removed Kings Current and Tulare Counties from the elderberry beetle watch list, if you will. So there's implications to that. The feds are essentially saying, we're okay with it, go do your projects. Cal Fish and Wildlife is still looking at it, not from the beetle perspective, from habitat, but from riparian habitat, because it's still a bush. Whether or not it hosts a beetle, it still provides riparian habitat. So we'll look at that carefully, but as far as the federal level, we don't have to concern ourselves with that. That has the potential to save us a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of delay. Yes, Commissioner, would you?
Quickly, if you, you know, for a long time, the Dry Creek Road, enough year around for that, was supposedly under repair, but we have elderberry bushes in the way of the road. So now, will the county be able to move ahead with these projects, move the elderberry bushes without creating another habitat?
Yeah, I want to say yes, overall.
We're a little hesitant at this time pending other future decisions, but from everything we've heard from our consultants and from higher up at the fed level, yes. If you look at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's website, and you actually read the Federal Register, that would be a true statement.
So Erin, from the fed's point of view, did the elderberry beetle make a great comeback, or did they just give up on it?
Well, I think they gave up on it, to use your words, in these three counties.
They gave up on it, and then there's also the California elderberry beetle, and both of them like elderberries. And there's no evidence, no capture of a beetle, or dead or alive, to say like the boring hole where they came out of was indeed a valley elderberry. It could have been a California elderberry, so they kind of stepped back from that. While no evidence is there to suggest that it's critical habitat for them anymore. But then again, that's okay on their side. State of California, of course, now they're going to say, okay, but it's still a bush, you know, and birds are going to live there and things are going to happen, so you got to take care of that. So we're moving forward with that particular project. I have a blevey of other projects that are going on. We have an EIR that should be coming to your commission. If the applicant can keep to his timeframe towards the end of your, or their second meeting in October, the Tulare Silver Center well-hit project, that's hoping to move forward. And we probably have a couple of EIRs that'll be coming to you in December. So we're busy, we're busy, but other than that, that's pretty much what I've got going.
It seems odd that the states have hung up on the elderberry, the park and the BLM, National Park and the BLM have both masticated both of their roads and taken plenty of those bushes out with no EIR whatsoever. And that's exactly what the county needs to do on their portion of the Mineral King Road, too.
Well, again, it's still lumped in there with, you know, where their standalone grows with elderberry bush, it's not a problem. It's when, especially our bridge projects where they are lumped in with all the other riparian habitat, they'll require mitigation.
Oh, yeah. Screen build is a whole different story.
Right. Not for endangered species, but just pure habitat for riparian, as riparian.
Mike Bond, RMA Public Works. The biggest project that I think we've taken on fairly recently was brought to the board a couple of weeks ago, and it's the Measure Our Funding Plan. And it was really designed to be compatible with the nine projects that Erin spoke to for community plan updates. Essentially, it's a window of what Public Works will be tasked to do with over the next five years, and it's all prioritized. It's asking for $94 million in Measure Our money. And much of that is leveraged with other federal and other state funding. So it's a very ambitious program, and it's designed intentionally to be compatible with and support Erin's projects for the community plan updates. So it's, there are a lot of other major projects that we have underway. There are three high-priority projects that have been identified. One is Caldwell from Highway 99 to City Visalia to Acres, essentially. That's, that will be started very soon. And we've got two others. Just recently, on August 29th, had a bridge dedication. Avenue 416 Bridge was rededicated to RB Oliver. And we're now, since the bridge is completed, we're now working on the widening of Avenue 416 from the west boundary of the county to City Dinuba. So it's essentially two sections, one to the west of the bridge, one to the east of the bridge. That widening project is underway. It's a very high-priority project. We're now in the stage where we're acquiring a right-of-way for that. And then the third project is really, not a Measure Our project, but it's as well a high-priority project. It's a replacement of the Road 224 Deer Creek Bridge that was washed away. So, but in addition to those, we're just working very closely with planning, with Erin's projects, to make sure that all the community things are done together, as well as our entire road maintenance program is being realigned to address a lot of the community needs.
Well, I just, these gentlemen have really covered pretty much everything for planning and public works. Just touch base, give you an update on economic development pieces. Building permits for AutoZone for Cutler Rossi were just recently issued, so in about 90 days from now, we'll probably have AutoZone open for business. Strathmore Dollar General Store, the permits have been reviewed, and as soon as some escrow papers are signed or closed, those will go out as well for Dollar General and Strathmore. We broke ground for a medical clinic in early March next to the elementary school, so that's under construction now. So we're seeing a continued increase in commercial activity for building permits, and everything's going smooth right now.
And we'd also like to commend Mike on taking over the grants program within our division as well.
Yes, economic development has absorbed the grants division, so it's economic development and grants.
Good. Good fit.
That concludes the report.
All right. Thank you so much.
Before you go, I don't know if she's a spy or from county council, but the lovely lady in the black, I'm not sure I know who she is, but that's because I'm old.
Do you want to talk?
The head of the grant chair.
Yes, I guess I can. That is Jennifer McNichols. She's one of our, she had been a temporary employee for, I don't know how long, but a long time, but Monday was her first day as a full-time employee. And actually, we've been teasing her because she took a pay cut because she became a full-time employee.
But she's got benefits.
Well, she's got less money. And you may, she will probably be between Lisa Tannenbaum, myself, and Jennifer, you'll probably be seeing them, more likely Lisa and Jennifer than me. I kind of sub. We always want you guys to have the A-game, so that's why we give them.
Right. Keep us on our toes.
Oh, and well.
Okay, that's it then, Erin?
Yes.
All right. Item nine is Planning Commission's Discussion for Items and Request for Future Agenda Items.
I have a question regarding the interpreting that happened. Is that something that the county is required to provide, or is the applicant supposed to provide?
We're going to look into that. Because that, what I don't want to happen is kind of what happened today. Either we're going to do it, or we're not going to do it. So we're going to have to figure out what actually the law is.
Well, we can do it with one of our employees. I mean, we're getting hot water on that.
I know on big projects that are contested, we know in advance that this is going to happen, and we have people here to do it. They just need to have some kind of policy on how it's going to be handled. I know for the general plan, we had all kinds of interpreters, we had headsets for them, we had a lot of things. It's kind of difficult in this setting where you really don't know what's going on.
I just thought it was kind of unfair to Maria, first of all, and then.
Well, I was.
We were interpreting one way and not the other way is like, well, they're not getting the full story anyway, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
We're going to have to look into it.
Maybe just set up a protocol that we know what to do.
I thought Maria did a lovely job, but I don't speak Spanish, so that's not much of an endorsement.
Well, there was a time when, in my past life, when I was doing criminal work and the official court reporter, the person was talking, and the official court reporter just sat there, and then all of a sudden said yes. I mean, the person talked for maybe a minute, just said yes, and it was like, okay, we have a problem.
Okay, any other items?
I just have that announcement on the CCPCA. The conference is set now November 7th and 8th. You can log on the website and check out the hotel options. You should also email me if you're interested in going, because when the link's up on the website to register, I'm going to forward that to the office and to all you. But get your hotel reserved. It doesn't cost anything, you just, and I'm sure there's a cancellation policy too, so get that set and let me know. And it looks like it's going to be San Joaquin County. We'll be probably for the sessions on Friday at UC Merced, and then there'll be some kind of tour set up for Saturday. So I'll let you know more about that as it develops.
That looks good. Looking forward to that. Okay, if there's no other items, we're adjourned until October 8th.
Okay. Um, if, uh, there's no other items, we're adjourned until October eighth.